for releasing all hostages, but we also stressed our flat rejection of the Israeli policy of collective punishment. We stress the need to fully respect international humanitarian law, which demands that Israel stop its indiscriminate and continued shelling of civilians and civilian property. Today, there isn't a single place or a single person in Gaza who is safe because of Israel's shelling of the refugee camps, of schools, of hospitals, of mosques, of churches, of United Nations facilities that people have sought refuge in. Moreover, many journalists and those working in healthcare have been killed. Seventy UNRWA staff are among the dead, seven zero. And here we reiterate our strong condemnation of the violent Israeli shelling of the camp of Jabalya last Tuesday, which killed and wounded hundreds, even those who have fled to the south. And despite Israel's impossible orders to evacuate the north, those were not safe from the shelling. As we have said repeatedly, the United Arab Emirates expresses its absolute rejection of the forced displacement of the Palestinian people from their land. We will not allow a new Palestinian Nakba. We are deeply concerned over Israel's announcement of a complete blockade on Gaza as well as its cutting off of electricity and gas, which has led to the collapse of the health sector. And this comes after it has imposed strict controls over water and over food and other commodities. While humanitarian aid is accumulating at the Rafah crossing, only a very limited percentage of trucks have entered Gaza, representing less than four percent of the total volume of commodities that used to enter before the war. We appreciate Egypt's continued efforts to ensure access to humanitarian aid in Gaza in addition to other critical efforts, including its receipt yesterday of a number of the injured and the ill from the war in Gaza for treatment. All parties to the conflict, namely Israel, must allow and facilitate rapid, safe, and unhindered passage of humanitarian aid for all civilians in need throughout Gaza in a sustainable manner. The full and unimpeded access of humanitarian personnel must also be ensured. We also stress the importance of allowing them into the Gaza Strip to address the acute humanitarian crisis there and to be able to travel throughout it. We further stress that internet and communication networks should resume and should continue to operate without interruption to facilitate the work of medical teams and humanitarian actors. Mr. President, the United Arab Emirates continues to follow its historic and longstanding approach of supporting the Palestinian people. Once the war began, we hastened to launch a national campaign entitled Tarahum, Compassion for Gaza, and we opened a humanitarian air bridge to Egypt for UAE aid and UN assistance to reach the people of Gaza as quickly as possible. The United Arab Emirates also pledged last month 20 million US dollars to the UNRWA. This comes in addition to the 35 million dollars that we have already provided earlier this year. Moreover, the President of the United Arab Emirates, His Highness Sheikh Mohammed bin Zayed al-Hayyan, also directed the provision of medical treatment for 1,000 Palestinian children along with their families in the UAE. We continue to call for the international community to stop managing this conflict and to protect and achieve the two-state solution so that a sovereign Palestinian state is established on the borders of June 4th, 1967, with East Jerusalem as its capital. The Palestinian people have suffered for far too long under this occupation, and they, like other peoples, deserve a stable and secure future, a future in which the children of Gaza can attend schools and not shelter in them. A future where young men and women build the institutions of their state and not search for their relatives under the rubble. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Zambia.
I thank you for calling this emergency session of the General Assembly to discuss this very important subject matter. Zambia joins the rest of the international community in condemning the seventh October 2023 attack on Israel by Hamas, which now deteriorated into ongoing conflict in the Gaza Strip. This dire situation has led to the grave loss of lives in both states, especially in Gaza, where thousands of innocent lives have been lost, including children. Zambia extends her heartfelt condolences and sympathies to all the families and communities affected by these events. Mr. President, Zambia respects the principle of protection of all civilians in situations of conflict. We therefore call for unhindered humanitarian support to all civilians affected by this conflict in order to ensure that the necessary aid flows in a timely manner to all needed areas in the Gaza Strip and in compliance with international humanitarian law. We also call for the immediate release of all hostages to ensure adherence and respect of international human rights law and in accordance with the principles of the United Nations Charter. Zambia therefore supports the efforts of the international community and African Union that have also called for the immediate cessation of hostilities. The government of the Republic of Zambia also recognizes that the acts of terrorism and killing of innocent civilians cannot continue to be committed in the pursuit of peace. Zambia joins the international community in condemning all acts of violence and continue to urge all parties to return to a space of dialogue. All efforts towards de-escalation of the war situation by all parties must be pursued. There is need to return to the negotiating table and implement the principle of the two-state solution, which this General Assembly agreed upon, where the two nations will live side by side in peace. Mr. President, if there was ever a time that the world has looked to the UN for unified position in the pursuit of peace, the time is now. We therefore commend the UN Secretary General's effort in seeking peace in this conflict. It is hoped that in the spirit of searching peaceful avenues to resolve this conflict, the world will rally together, stand resolute against chaos, and seek a brighter and more harmonious path forward. In this regard, Zambia calls upon all member states, all member states, to defend the true multilateralism and uphold the principles enshrined in the UN Charter. We should together support the United Nations system and its institutions and institutional leadership in discharging the mandate of the organization. Mr. President, in concluding, I'd like to restate that Zambia will continue to advocate for peaceful methods of conflict resolution. It is well known that without peace, the global community cannot attain sustainable development, and we cannot effectively pursue programs of economic and social development. We therefore reiterate our call for a more effective diplomatic dialogue and need for the UN and the member states to urgently come up with a workable, agreeable solution to resolve this conflict that the international community has been grappling with for so many years. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, the distinguished representative of Zambia. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sudan.
In the name of God, the most merciful, most compassionate Mr. President, my country, Sudan and the government of Sudan would like to associate itself with the statements delivered by the group of Arab states and Islamic states at the outset of this 10th emergency special session because it is the least or the minimum amount required to support the Palestinian people after the Security Council has failed in upholding its duties and responsibilities. Once again, the tragic situation in the Middle East and the Palestinian areas has the priority attention of the international community as a result of the resurgence of violence and destruction in an unprecedented and barbaric manner. The situation in the occupied Palestinian territories is the inevitable result of the international community's failure over decades to resolve the Palestinian issue on the basis of international law and the Arab Peace Initiative and other relevant United Nations resolutions in a manner that would achieve a just and comprehensive and lasting peace in the Middle East, which is the strategic option, the sole strategic option to achieve stability in the region. The continuation of this conflict without any clear political horizons for settlement will have dangerous repercussions and will prolong further wars in the region and the area at large, depriving the Palestinians from their legitimate and just right that has been guaranteed them by international laws and conventions for the establishment of an independent state that is sovereign and within the 1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital is something that we reject. Moreover, the Security Council and the United Nations must shoulder their moral and legal responsibility and must work seriously towards achieving a two-state solution and the establishment of an independent and sovereign Palestinian state. Any failure to protect civilians from the barbaric and systemic shelling is a failure by the international community and the United Nations. Therefore, the priority must be given to the protection of civilians and to alleviating the suffering. We should also give priority to protecting civilian infrastructure and property that is necessary for the daily life. Moreover, we must deliver urgent humanitarian care and reinstate water, power, food, and fuel. The behavior of the Israeli occupying authorities in Gaza, in the Gaza Strip, including the siege imposed on it and the closure of crossing points to prevent aid arriving there and its attempt to forcibly displace civilians while shelling them incessantly is a clear violation of international law and a cause of great concern. The government of Sudan reiterates that it stands by all the efforts that are being made to de-escalate and to stop the aggression on Gaza and the forced displacement of its people and the prolongation of a conflict that would only lead to more victims, more tragedy, and more humanitarian catastrophes in an area that is already riddled with crises. Therefore, our government stresses its support for the outcomes of the ministerial declaration issued by the League of Arab States in its regular session held on the 11th of October in Cairo on means of action to put an end to the Israeli aggression and to achieve peace and stability in the area and to establish a fact-finding commission on the crimes perpetrated in Gaza and the West Bank that rise to the level of genocide and crimes of war. And Sudan also calls for lifting the siege that has been imposed on the Strip for more than 16 years and to offer humanitarian aid and medical aid so that we can avoid another Nakba that is soon to come. Sudan reiterates that the Palestinian question is the central and foremost question, and it reiterates its firm position, calling for the establishment of an independent Palestinian state on the 1967 borders with Jerusalem as its capital in accordance with the laws of international, the principles of international law and the Arab Peace Initiative and international terms of reference. We reiterate our position on the need to respect the historic identity, the Islamic and Christian identity of East Jerusalem and the status quo there and make no attempt to change its demographic makeup. Voting in favor of this resolution, which was adopted by the General Assembly on Friday and which was supported by the vast majority of member states, is a victory of humanity and justice, while we see the numbers of, while we see that the number of victims has risen to over 9,000 victims in Gaza and the West Bank and 23,000 have been injured. Supporting this resolution is the least we can do to save civilians from the machine of destruction and war that is targeting the Palestinian people and that is especially targeting women, children, and the elderly. And it is what is needed to reinstate or to revive work towards the two-state solution and to put an end to this evil that is reaping lives in a very terrible way. This resolution adopted by the General Assembly, we hope that it will be used as the basis of resolution for a ceasefire, for opening the border crossings, putting an end to the forced displacement, and for delivery of aid because what the Palestinian people are facing rises to the level of genocide and of crimes of war. And this has been described as such by legal experts. Therefore, we must push for putting an end to a vicious ground offensive that will only cause more victims and more deaths and would victimize more women, children, and elderly. These pictures are being broadcast by Arab international media and being resonated by demonstrations throughout the world. The viciousness of the Israeli attack and the huge numbers of victims and the huge numbers of those in need of aid make it important to immediately call for humanitarian ceasefire so that we would avoid another humanitarian catastrophe that will be remembered in the books of contemporary history. The forced displacement of the people of Gaza to the desert or to the borders with Egypt is considered an act that threatens international and regional peace and security and must be stopped so that the current war would not expand. We join voices with those delegations that have commended the efforts of the Secretary General and his demands to open the Rafah Crossing so that we would deliver humanitarian aid urgently. And preventing the Security Council from playing its part according to the Charter and preventing the Secretary General from performing his duties in dealing with conflicts will empty the United Nations of its content and of its purposes. Mr. President, the fact that the Security Council did not reach a just and comprehensive peace in the Middle East and that it failed to shoulder its responsibilities and duties to maintain peace and security as a result of strict, narrow national considerations is something that undermines the United Nations, which was established after a grinding war. And the Security Council must continue to achieve peace and security and a resolution to conflict, or else we will threaten future generations with a life in a world where war is rampant and where nowhere is safe from bloodshed and destruction, and this is a failure of humanity as a whole. We must work together so that we do not push the United Nations to the fate of the League of Nations, which was killed by its inability to take its own decisions. Moreover, giving precedence to narrow national interests over the interest of global and world peace means that we need to make positive approaches to resolve problems and conflicts and to arrive at settlements and constructive concessions. And one of the most important features of multilateral diplomacy is to adopt a win-win approach by all parties. However, the current approach has been frozen in a lose-lose approach, in a zero-sum approach that will only lead to more paralysis and which will only hinder the Secretary, the Security Council, from performing its Charter mandated duties. If we were to make progress, then we must stick to consensus and to agreement so that we would serve the goal of peace. Therefore, we call upon the international community to adopt multilateralism and to put forth the common interest of humanity in order to work towards peace and to work towards ending war. The United Nations is the mechanism to establish its values and its criteria so that we would work towards multilateralism and towards peace and security in the world. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Sudan. Next speaker is the distinguished representative of Nauru.
Mr. President, Nauru welcomes the convening of the 10th Emergency Special Session. However, we are disappointed that the UN Security Council was not able to perform its mandate to maintaining and ensuring international peace and security. Nevertheless, as members of the United Nations and upholders of the principles enshrined in the UN Charter and the rule of law, it is our duty to meet and discuss this very important issue. Mr. President, Nauru condemns the horrendous terror attacks on October 7th to the Israeli people by Hamas, a genocidal terror organization who are responsible for the loss of innocent lives and taking innocent civilians as hostages. We join the call for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. Moreover, we also call on member states to intensify efforts to suppress financing of terrorism. We support Israel's right to defend itself and its citizens in accordance with international law. We acknowledge the efforts by the UN Secretary General and some members in trying to resolve and de-escalate the situation. It is important more than ever that we all work together to redouble our diplomatic efforts so that the situation in the Middle East does not spill over across the region. We also encourage and welcome all efforts to facilitate humanitarian corridors and other initiatives for safe passage and delivery of humanitarian aid to civilians. It is critical that we provide essential goods and services, including water, food, medical supplies, and humanitarian aid. Mr. President, I take this moment to express our sincere condolences to the families for the loss of innocent lives in Israel and Gaza and to those brave humanitarian staff of the UN Agency for Palestine Refugees who lost their lives in their line of duty. Nauru supports the two-state solution where the people of Israel and Palestine live side by side in peace, security, and dignity. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Nauru. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brunei Darussalam.
Thank you, Mr. President, for resuming this 10th Emergency Special Session during this necessary and urgent time. Brunei Darussalam is grateful to the delegations that promptly submitted the request to convene this ESS at the earliest possible opportunity. At the outset, we align ourselves with the statement delivered by Mauritania on behalf of the OIC. In particular, Brunei Darussalam strongly condemns the recent severe escalation of violence that has resulted in the unjustifiable loss of innocent lives, suffering, and destruction of property in the occupied Palestinian territory. We are deeply saddened by the intensifying number of civilian casualties in the Gaza Strip, including the elderly, women, and babies, that is only increasing day by day. Mr. President, this current escalation is a direct result of the injustice and suffering that has been imposed by the occupying power for over the past 75 years. And after all these decades of being on the international agenda, there needs to be a full understanding and recognition of the Palestinian struggle. As Brunei Darussalam has mentioned over the past many years, including during our general debate statements, Palestine has been under daily siege, violence, and occupation, suffering from the apartheid policies of the occupying power to illegal activity and violence from settlers. Palestinians suffer daily violations to their basic human rights and dignities from restrictions to food, water, electricity, shelter, and medicine, and even so far as to restrict them from their right to worship by not allowing access to the holy Al-Aqsa Mosque, to the bombing of their places of worship. Mr. President, violence and breaches of international law in the occupied Palestinian territories are increasing with impunity. Urgent action is needed. We urge all parties to immediately cease all forms of violence and exercise utmost restraint. Brunei Darussalam will continue to fully support all efforts and mediation initiatives to de-escalate the situation immediately and to ensure the situation in Palestine remains the top priority in the international agenda, especially here at the UN. We call upon all parties to abide by their obligations in accordance with international law, including international humanitarian and human rights law and the UN Charter, including international, sorry, especially in ensuring the safety and security of all civilians as well as civilian infrastructure in this conflict. The level of violence and indiscriminate attacks in both Gaza and the West Bank has been not only disproportionate and excessive, but also targets innocent civilians and continues unabated, from the inhumane blockade in Gaza to the intentional deprivation of food, water, and electricity, and the targeting of civilian infrastructure and evacuation routes. We have seen Palestinians forced out of their homes and the escalation of settler violence. And of particular concern is the forced displacement of Palestinians from the north to the south of Gaza. We cannot allow such acts to continue and merely stand by and watch the forcible displacement of a group of people from their homes reminiscent of the first Nakba 75 years ago. We need to ensure that displaced Palestinians are assured of their right to return to their homes and properties. The escalation of violence within a crippling occupation has exacerbated an already dire humanitarian crisis. While we welcome news that humanitarian aid has begun to enter Gaza through the reopening of the Rafah border, it has been in limited quantities, insufficient for a population already struggling under occupation and facing the looming advent of winter. We call for the establishment of humanitarian corridors to the occupied Palestinian territory for full and sustained access to relief, aid, and assistance. In this regard, we would like to commend the various humanitarian agencies under the UN, the Red Crescent Societies, and other organizations in facilitating the delivery of food, water, medicine, and other much-needed emergency supplies, as well as contributions from member states. As part of our national efforts to contribute to such relief assistance, we have established the Humanitarian Fund for Palestinians in Gaza 2023. We hope these various international and different national efforts can safely and steadfastly continue with no impediments so much needed aid can be provided and reach everyone in need. In particular, we would also like to acknowledge the work and sacrifice of UNRWA personnel, our deepest gratitude for their unwavering dedication to alleviating suffering in the most challenging circumstances, and our heartfelt condolences to the loved ones of those that have lost their lives in the pursuit of doing so. Mr. President, the work of the UN, from the Secretary General to humanitarian personnel, are absolutely indispensable in this time of conflict. Brunei Darussalam strongly supports their efforts, and we believe that those carrying out such work and activities should never be targeted. The escalation of conflict and violence in Palestine did not occur in a vacuum. To this end, we reaffirm our support also towards international efforts aimed at achieving a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in the Middle East on the basis of international law and the relevant UN resolutions. In this regard, we fully supported the adoption of the resolution introduced by Jordan titled Protection of Civilians and Upholding Legal and Humanitarian Obligations that we have co-sponsored and welcome its adoption with the support of an overwhelming majority of member states. This is a clear and resounding indication that the international community recognizes the catastrophic humanitarian situation in the Gaza Strip and that urgent and immediate action is needed to prevent further destabilization and escalation of violence in the region. Mr. President, the Security Council has a special and moral responsibility to faithfully fulfill its obligations to uphold international peace and security. And we, as members of this August Assembly, must ensure that we don't fail the people of Palestine yet, once again. Brunei Darussalam continues to stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people, and we remain resolute in our commitment to supporting Palestine in pursuit of its inalienable rights to self-determination. We reaffirm also our commitment to this two-state solution with an independent and sovereign state of Palestine based on pre-1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brunei Darussalam. Next speaker is distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Mr. President, 20 months ago, a full-fledged war against Ukraine waged by Russia has shown showed how fragile our world is if the insane dictator equipped with the weapons of mass destruction decides to employ terrorist practices against peaceful sovereign state. The fact that the Assembly had to resume tenth emergency special session is another warning sign that instead of resolving existing conflicts, we are dealing with their multiplication. The terrorist groups and terrorist regimes are the only beneficiaries of this menacing developments. Mr. President, we condemn the brutal and indiscriminate terrorist attacks of Hamas on Israel on October seventh that plunged the Middle East region into hostilities. The barbaric massacre by Hamas led to horrendous toll of casualties in the course of ongoing hostilities, including among the citizens of Ukraine as well as many other countries. I would like to reiterate once again that Ukrainians feel deeply the pain and devastation of war. Russia and Hamas are driven by the same motivation. As Hamas denies the right of Israel to exist, Russia denies the same right of Ukraine and continues its terror and war of aggression against Ukraine and Ukrainians as a nation. We are concerned that Hamas continues to terrorize the region by indiscriminate attacks against civilians, as well as uses them as a human shield. They are still keeping over two hundred hostages in Gaza, including babies, children, women, and the elderly. It's also clear that all these actions only aggravate the situation in the region. There is a real threat that conflict could spread throughout the entire region. We must increase our common efforts to avoid further escalation. We are convinced that the strong condemnation of Hamas should be an essential part of the General Assembly's response to the current situation. Ukraine has always advocated for calling a spade a spade. We regret that the proposed amendment to the draft resolution regarding the condemnation of Hamas terrorist attacks against Israel has not been approved. We also firmly support Israel's right to defend itself in line with international law and international humanitarian law. We demand immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. Today, it is critically important to avoid further increase in the number of civilian casualties, both in Israel and Palestine. Every life is a value. All civilians must be protected. The international community must take all possible measures to safeguard the innocent civilian lives, including the international and local humanitarian personnel that work on the ground. We urge to strictly abide by the rules of warfare and respect the norms of international humanitarian law. All actions must be taken to save lives and minimize harm to civilians. Ukraine expresses gravest concern for the deterioration of humanitarian situation in Gaza. We emphasize the need of unhindered humanitarian access and aid to protect and help civilians, including through humanitarian corridors. Ukraine is convinced that humanitarian support and access must be maintained into Gaza to enable access to essential aid, water, food, and medical care, fuel, and shelter to reach all civilians that are suffering. We commend dedicated humanitarian work of the UNRWA staff and all agencies who provide humanitarian support. We express our sincere condolences to families of the humanitarian personnel who have lost their lives since October seven. Mr. President, current situation in the region only undermines the prospects of a peaceful future for two peoples. At the same time, the Middle East peace process remains the basis of any efforts aimed at restoring regional stability and security. Ukraine has consistently supported the implementation of the principle of two states, Israel and Palestine, that live side by side in peace and security, and advocates the settlement of the Palestinian-Israeli conflict with the help of political and diplomatic means. We are confident that a just, comprehensive, and sustainable peace in the Middle East can be realized within the framework of unconditional implementation of relevant UN Security Council resolutions and other international agreements. The General Assembly has demanded to ensure the protection of civilians and civilian object, as well to enable and facilitate humanitarian access for essential supplies and services to reach all civilians in need. The immediate continuous sufficient and unhindered provisions of essential goods and services to civilians throughout the Gaza Strip. The Assembly also called for immediate, full, sustained, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access for the United Nations, the International Committee of the Red Cross, and all other humanitarian organizations, upholding humanitarian principles and delivering urgent assistance to civilians in the Gaza Strip, encouraged the establishment of humanitarian corridors and other initiatives to facilitate the delivery of humanitarian aid to civilians, and welcomes efforts in this regard. Ukraine calls for these urgent tasks to be fully implemented. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Saint Vincent and Zegun Adins.
Mr. President, we thank you for convening this emergency special session of the General Assembly, as the ongoing hostilities in the Middle East necessitate urgent attention. My delegation begins by recalling the UN Security Council Resolution 242, which enshrines the international community's commitment to seeking a two-state solution for Israel and Palestine to peacefully exist alongside each other within secure and recognized boundaries, free from threats or acts of force. This resolution, from which there must be no derogation, constitutes the cornerstone of diplomatic efforts in the Middle East. In this vein, Mr. President, we unequivocally condemn the abhorrent attacks carried out by Hamas and the Israeli Defense Force in Israel and Gaza, which run counter to our ambitions. The illegal colonization and occupation of Palestinian territory and the gradual erosion of its international, internationally, sorry, established borders continue to be the root cause of violence. If this remains unaddressed and unresolved, hostilities will continue unabated, haunting us and future generations. We underscore that the right of Israel to exist in peace is not tantamount to an unfettered license for the illegal occupation and suppression of the rights of the Palestinian people, which are egregious affronts to international law. Mr. President, the Security Council's ability to effectively transform the situation on the ground is being questioned by the international community, which more and more is becoming understandably frustrated with the Council's paralysis. This inaction is the reason why we are gathered here today. The will of the Palestinian people and an overwhelming majority of the General Assembly have been thwarted by a minority of powerful states. We urge the Security Council to shoulder its responsibility and rise to the occasion. We appeal to the veto-wielding permanent members of the Security Council, more specifically the United States, France, and the United Kingdom, who have regularly supported Israel's policies to engage constructively to facilitate a cessation of hostilities, support the urgent and unhindered passage of humanitarian aid, and insist on the equal application of international law. We underscore that while Article fifty-one preserves the inherent right to self-defense, this mechanism cannot be allowed to be used as a justification for the indiscriminate killing of civilians or to shield violations of international law. To remain within the parameters of what is legally acceptable and appropriate self-defense must be both necessary and proportionate. Mr. President, the UN Relief and Works Agency for Palestinian Refugees in the Near East, UNRWA, estimates that over six hundred and forty thousand people have been internally displaced and are sheltering in UNRWA's facilities. Over nine thousand people have been killed in the Gaza Strip since October seventh, with children making up more than three thousand of the aggregate and over twenty thousand injured. Behind each of these numbers is a face, no less worthy of a right to life than you or me. These statistics unambiguously illustrate that the justification of self-defense has gone beyond what is proportionate and necessary, and therefore exceeded the realm of what is legally acceptable. In other words, how many human beings must die before the Security Council considers the act of exercising the veto more egregious than its moral and legal obligation of saving succeeding generations from the scourge of war? The ambitions enshrined in the United Nations Security Council Resolution 242 necessitate action to enable their realization. In this context, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines co-sponsored the resolution that was tabled by the Arab Group and adopted by the General Assembly last week. We believe that the draft resolution contains the resolution, sorry, contains fundamental elements that demonstrate the international community's commitment to upholding international law, as well as to facilitating the action necessary to safeguard the rights of civilians. An immediate ceasefire is non-negotiable. The people of Palestine deserve to exist in peace in the same way that the people of Israel deserve that peace. Saint Vincent and the Grenadines reaffirms its support for the Secretary General's leadership and sustained engagement on the Palestine question, and we express our appreciation to the UN agencies that are undertaking efforts to bring immediate relief to those most in need. We urge all stakeholders, particularly those with influence, to work constructively towards facilitating an immediate end to the hostilities that would enable the creation of an environment conducive to achieving a just and lasting peace in line with UN Security Council Resolution 242. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Peace profound.
I thank the distinguished representative of Saint Vincent and Zegun Adins. The next speaker is distinguished representative of Suriname.
Mr. President, Suriname aligns itself with the statements delivered by the representative of Mauritania on behalf of the OIC and the representative of Jamaica on behalf of Karikom, and would like to add the following in its national capacity. The international community must be vigorous in applying all means to avoid human suffering and the killing of innocent people wherever in the world. The already disturbing situation and developments between Israel and the State of Palestine, especially in the Gaza Strip, continues to worsen, causing immense and unacceptable human suffering. We must welcome all efforts, initiatives, and opportunities to foster peace and dialogue among the parties. In an already uncertain and conflicted world, we must do everything possible to avoid another political, security, and humanitarian crisis. It is our collective responsibility as members of the international community to uphold the principles enshrined in the United Nations Charter and reaffirm the need for a just and lasting solution to this conflict. Suriname deeply regrets the escalation of the ongoing conflict, resulting in the loss of so many innocent lives. We offer our condolences and sympathy to all who have lost family and loved ones in this deep-rooted, age-old conflict. We also condole with the families of the UN staff members who have lost their lives during this conflict. Suriname joins the rest of the international community in calling for an immediate ceasefire to prevent further escalation that endangers civilians and to avoid further destruction. We call on all involved to provide immediate unrestricted humanitarian access to enable essential aid, water, food, and medicine to reach the people of Gaza. The well-being of the population in the Gaza Strip must be secured. The hardship experienced by these innocent persons must be mitigated. We call for the immediate and unconditional release of all remaining hostages. Mr. President, Suriname's foreign policy is inspired by moral values and principles to achieve global peace, security, and welfare for all, and in case of conflicts, the settlement through dialogue and negotiations in a peaceful and just manner, recognizing internationally accepted principles of respect, dignity, and international and humanitarian law. We reiterate our support for the ongoing efforts of the United Nations towards a two-state solution, as this is the best way to achieve sustainable and comprehensive peace, security, and stability between Israel and Palestine. Such an outcome is the only just and sustainable path to ending this longstanding conflict. Finally, Mr. President, in this critical moment, we call on all parties to exercise restraint, to de-escalate tensions, and return to the path of dialogue and negotiation. It is our collective responsibility to seek a peaceful resolution that respects the rights and aspirations of both Israelis and Palestinians. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished ambassador of Suriname. The next speaker is distinguished representative of Timor-Leste.
Mr. President, at the outset, Timor-Leste wishes to thank you for convening this emergency special session. We are pleased to join the Arab Group, OIC, and countries on the region in requesting for the reassumption of this session. Mr. President, we are witnessing the gravest escalation of violence in the Middle East in decades. Thousands of lives have been lost. There is mass displacement, with over one point four million displaced in Gaza from their homes since seven October. Each day, more than four hundred Palestinian children are killed or injured in Gaza. Nowhere is safe in Gaza, with the past days having recorded the most intense bombardment. The UN data on this conflict is horrifying. As of twenty-fifth October, there have been six thousand five hundred forty-seven killed in Gaza. Of which sixty-eight percent are women and children. Seventeen thousand four hundred thirty-nine have been injured. Approximately four one thousand four hundred Israeli have been killed and five thousand four hundred thirty-one injured. Meanwhile, Rafa crossing has only allowed a very limited amount of aid, and data has been restricted. This data as of twenty-fifth October. Since twenty-first October, only sixty-two trucks bearing aid have gone into Gaza compared with the daily rate of five hundred prior to seventh October. Fuel desperately needed for essential services such as hospitals, desalination plants, and water pumping stations remain in band. This untenable situation is only getting worse. We commend the UN Secretary General and the United Nations for the ongoing humanitarian assistance provided to people in Gaza. Mr. President, remaining silent is such a situation is not an option. The Security Council has failed to meet its responsibility four times in the past three weeks. We are pleased that we took the collective responsibility to step up and speak to people. to step up and speak to protect all civilians through this resolution adopted by this assembly. Mr. President, we subscribe to the core humanitarian principles highlighted in the resolution, which are essential to reaffirm at this stage to protect civilians' lives from further suffering. We supported the key elements, namely, first, the call for an immediate humanitarian trust. The Secretary-General and virtually all UN officials and NGOs have made such calls. Secondly, the condemnation of all violence against Palestinian and Israeli civilians, including all acts of terror and discriminated attacks. Thirdly, the emphasis that civilians must be protected and demands all parties to comply with their obligation under international law. Fourthly, the call for unhindered humanitarian access while encouraging the establishment of humanitarian corridors to facilitate the delivery of humanitarian aid to civilians who seek it so desperately needed. Fifthly, the call for the protection of civilian and humanitarian facilities such as hospitals, schools, places of worship, and UN facilities. It also underlines the need to take appropriate steps to allow the safe movement of civilians. As we have before in other contexts, it is critical that the General Assembly protect the fundamental principles that underline our collective humanity. Having a GA resolution that calls on parties to respect their obligations and for aid to those in need is the very last, very least we have done, and that is the reason why Timor-Leste co-sponsored the draft resolution and has voted in favor of it. Mr. President, while supporting the call for an immediate, durable, and sustained humanitarian trust ceasefire and call for immediate, full-sustained, safe, and unhindered humanitarian aid access and other important elements of the resolutions adopted by the Assembly, we also voted in the favor of the amendment to the draft resolution presented by Canada. We are of the view that the attacks by Hamas on Israeli peoples on seven October twenty twenty-three also deserve condemnation as it is against the international humanitarian law. We believe that it is the responsibility of all, including this Assembly, to work towards a just and lasting solution to the Israeli-Palestinian based on the relevant United Nations resolutions in accordance with international law and on the basis of the two-state solution. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Timor-Leste. Next speaker, the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic.
Mr. President, the tenth emergency session of the General Assembly is resumed to discuss the dangerous situation in the occupied Palestinian territories. Given the paralysis at the Security Council due to the veto by the United States, which prevented it from shouldering its responsibility to maintain international peace and security, the United States insisted on giving Israel the green light to continue its brutal aggression on Gaza. The brutal Israeli practices against the Palestinian people have continued for decades and recently in the Gaza Strip. This is part of the Israeli occupation's systemic policy of ethnic cleansing of Palestinians and killing their dream in establishing an independent state with Jerusalem as a capital. The Israeli occupation bears full responsibility for the humanitarian suffering of the Palestinian people. The Israeli occupation continued its aggression, forced displacement policies, and they continue to arrest Palestinians and throw them in Israeli prisons. Israel's thirst for further Palestinian bloodshed has become clear and is yet to be quenched, even though it's killed thousands of innocent civilians and Palestinians, including more than three thousand children. Israel is yet to be satisfied with the destruction of homes and infrastructure and buildings and the targeting of innocent civilians in the West Bank and Gaza. Mr. President, some Western states, especially the United States of America, have provided protection and impunity for Israel for its continuing violations for hundreds of UN resolutions that have called upon it for decades to stop its continuing occupation of Palestinian territories, to respect the international law and international humanitarian law. This encouraged Israel to commit the most heinous crimes and terrorism against Palestinians. Recently, it targeted Al Ahli Hospital, the Saint Porphyrus Church, Unrua Schools, and Jabalya Refugee Camp. These are a textbook case of war crimes and crimes against humanity. The positions by Western states, especially the United States, supporting the so-called Israel's right to self-defense have no legal basis. They are rather an open invite to Israel to kill further Palestinians. The Western interpretation of Article fifty-one of the UN Charter is a is a despicable distortion of the principles of the Charter that guarantees people's rights to freedom, independence, and human rights. More than seven decades have passed since the occupation by Israel of Palestinian territories, since the continuing tragedy of millions of Palestinians who have been expelled of their country and became displaced across the globe. Their lands and properties have been seized and confiscated and turned into Israeli settlements in a blatant violation of the Fourth Geneva Convention. For more than seven decades, the West has been trying desperately to impose legitimacy on the Israeli occupation, which begs the question, how long should Palestinians wait for the world to finally acknowledge the need to take immediate and serious steps to stop this humanitarian tragedy? How many innocent civilians should fall until the world is finally convinced that the Israeli occupation of Arab territories is the main threat to international peace and regional peace and security? Mr. President, the adoption by the General Assembly on the twenty-seventh of October of a humanitarian resolution that calls for an immediate trust and access to humanitarian assistance rejected the displacement of Palestinians. It is a message by the vast majority of member states to stop the aggression, to end the brutal massacres and crimes against the people of Gaza after the United States and its allies did not shoulder their responsibility at the Security Council. Israel responded to this resolution with criminal military operations shamelessly and immediately violating the resolution. This warns of very dangerous repercussions. We strongly condemn the continuing brutal Israeli aggression of the Palestinian people in the Gaza Strip. We denounce any attempt to cover the Israeli crimes against innocent Palestinian civilians. These crimes have killed more than ten thousand Palestinians, including four thousand children. We stress the need for an immediate end to this aggression to allow the humanitarian assistance to enter, including food, medicine, and fuel for more than two point five million Palestinians in Gaza. It is important to ensure that Israel and its supporters are held accountable and do not enjoy impunity. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative for the Syrian Arab Republic. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Kiribati.
Mr. President, excellencies, distinguished delegates. Let me start by thanking the President and leadership of our United Nations family for bringing us together at this very sad and troubling time in the search for peace in the Middle East, where thousands of human lives are being destroyed, terrorized, threatened, or traumatized on a daily basis, in the heat and ripples of the ongoing fighting between the Israeli and Hamas forces since October seventh. When Hamas fighters attacked Israel, they killed over one thousand four hundred civilians and held hostage over two hundred civilian Israelis plus a number of nationals from other countries. The situation in the region is deeply alarming, that it has significantly deteriorated. We fully appreciate Jordan's call for pause on the fighting for the sake of innocent human lives. However, the framing of the circumstances that led to the armed conflict was not balanced, and that was our reasoning for supporting Canada's amendment to balance the narrative. Thank you, Mr. President, for reminding us to use this occasion not for fanning the flames and creating divisions, but to do all we can to put out the flames, foster reconciliation, and peace between the two warring sides. It is clear from listening to the various statements that the scale of destruction of human lives and properties are colossal on both sides, but more so on the Palestinian side. We therefore support calls for ceasefire, the immediate release of all innocent hostages, and safe passage for the delivery of humanitarian assistance and life-supporting services for over two million innocent Palestinians being squeezed up in the Gaza Strip. We join the many delegations in expressing our deepest condolences to the many families and individuals who have lost their loved ones during the past three weeks. Our hearts bleed with sorrow and sadness to see so many innocent and helpless lives, especially children, elderly, and hospital patients being destroyed by rockets, missiles, and bombs. We also express our deepest condolences and pay special tribute to the brave UN and Red Cross staff serving in the Gaza Strip who allowed themselves to make the ultimate sacrifice while discharging their duties for the innocent victims of this heartbreaking conflict. Travened by our sorrowful heart over the rising human toll of the conflict, we humbly appeal to Israel and Hamas to put their weapons down and start initiating the specific settlement of this field mechanism under Articles six and seven of the UN Charter. We appeal to the Middle East region to play a leading role under Article seven of the UN Charter in the search for lasting peace, progress, and prosperity for the Israelis and Palestinians and for the people of the Middle East. We also appeal to the leadership of our United Nations to help in facilitating the efforts of the two sides to strike a peace deal in line with past relevant resolutions and in accordance with international law. The peace deal must include measures to unback and heal the root causes of this longstanding conflict. Such measures must receive attention and priority attention and action by our United Nations leadership. Since the problems before us are human-made, they can also be fixed by human-made solutions. By working together as one human family, we have no doubt that these human-made problems are not as insurmountable as they appear to be. They can be fixed quickly if we all agree now to allow for the two peoples to coexist happily and peacefully side by side. Make Almighty God pour his abundant peace, mercy, and blessings on the people of the Holy Land, the Middle East, the whole world, and the United Nations. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Kiribati.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Senegal.
Monsieur le Président.
President, Senegal aligns itself with the statement delivered by the permanent representative of Mauritania on behalf of the Islamic Cooperation Organization and with the statement to be delivered by the permanent representative of the African Union. The thousands of victims due to the recent return to hostilities between Israel and Palestine calls for our attention. In addition to requiring the direct responsibility of the perpetrators, this reflects the failure of the international community to find a lasting solution to this ongoing conflict. President, with Israel's reprisals in the form of shelling on civilian infrastructure and housing in Gaza that has already caused more than ten thousand dead, here we are once again witnesses to a new episode in a tragedy that has lasted all too long. The bombardment of Jabalya Refugee Camp last night reminds us that women, children, and elderly, and the sick continue to pay the highest cost as innocent victims. What is happening in Gaza is a disgrace to the entire international community, which has remained indifferent for a long time in light of the tragedy faced by the Palestinian people deprived of their inalienable rights to fully live out their independence and sovereignty. In light of the occupation of the West Bank and over the last sixteen years, there has been the illegal siege of Gaza, this blockade that has transformed this strip home to two point three million people into an open-air prison that has ultimately impoverished its population. The time has now come for the international community to mobilize and to resolutely force parties to find a solution to ensure the sovereignty and independence of the State of Palestine on the pre-ninety-sixty-seven borders with East Jerusalem as its capital in accordance with international law and the relevant resolutions of the United Nations, and also to provide a just solution to the fate of the Palestinian refugees. President, we urgently must bring an end to the humanitarian crisis that is currently ongoing. We must establish a ceasefire and enable immediate humanitarian access that is complete, lasting, safe, and unhindered access to the Gaza Strip. Senegal is pleased that the Rafa Crossing Point has been opened to enable humanitarian aid to arrive to the population of Gaza. This is a step in the right direction, but it is far from being sufficient, as humanitarian agents have alerted. My delegation encourages further discussions in order to optimize more humanitarian corridors, and we feel that, however grave the situation, the Gazans are at home there and should continue to be there in security. Attacks against civilians are run counter to international law, and Israel as the occupying power has a duty to protect the population across all of the occupied Palestinian territories. across all of the occupied Palestinian territories. Senegal reiterates its call to refrain from further escalation, and we hail all efforts towards calming tensions. We also encourage the actions towards the release of the hostages, and we hope that they will be returned to their loved ones soon. We hail the efforts of all, including the Secretary-General of the United Nations, towards peace and to bringing an end to the humanitarian crisis that is getting worse every minute. For this reason, Senegal has cosponsored this resolution and is delighted that it has been adopted by a broad majority. This reminds us of the need to go beyond our differences when the situation requires it. In this regard, my delegation wishes to take this opportunity to pay tribute to all of the humanitarian organizations that are active on the ground, and we pay tribute to the memories of all of the humanitarian workers, including those of UNRWA who have laid down their lives in the attempt to save others. We also join the call of the Commissioner Zari to mobilize more resources that are urgently needed and also to provide sufficient and foreseeable funding through the regular budget. The Council's failure to act undermines the credibility of this organization. The Security Council cannot remain silent any longer. It must call for a de-escalation and ensure safe and unhindered deployment of humanitarian aid, which is really a matter of existential survival as the Gazans are deprived of food and fuel and water. Strict adherence to international law and international humanitarian law is urgent. Schools, hospitals, places of worship, UN installations, as well as all humanitarian, medical, and media staff must have their safety ensured. Senegal has the honor to preside over the Committee for the Exercise of the Inalienable People's Rights of the Palestinian People. And the only recourse for this conflict is international law and the resolutions of this organization, which is a two-state solution for both states within internationally recognized borders. It is ready to have a right to survive, and the Palestinians also have a right to a viable and contiguous state with East Jerusalem as their capital. This is the only and ultimate guarantee for them. It is this path that should guide our common action in order for both parties to this conflict so they may turn away from hate and support peace that is a liberating force. We must return to negotiations and achieve a lasting peace because war has never been a solution and it never will be. For all of these reasons that we have repeated on many occasions, Senegal once again calls for the implementation of these new resolutions on behalf of our universal and collective humanity that underpins them. I thank you.
Je vous remercie, Excellence. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Republic of Tanzania.
Mr. President, I thank you for giving us this opportunity to address the Assembly on the agenda item at hand. The United Republic of Tanzania wishes to register its concerns pertaining to the situation currently unfolding in the Middle East, particularly the conflict between Israel and Palestine. The conflict has once more exposed the fault lines of our esteemed organizations, the United Nations, whereby a body entrusted with the responsibility of maintaining international peace and security had thus far failed to stop a deeply rooted conflict, which is having a dire ramifications the civilians' population in Gaza and Israel. The paralysis of the United Nations Security Council to act on this matter is not a new phenomenon. Addressing this Agust Chamber in 1967, the United Republic of Tanzania warned and wish to reiterate that warning for record that the effective survival of the United Nations as an instrument for world peace is seriously endangered by its inability to stop conflicts and aggression in the world and in the Middle East in particular. This inability, which is chronic when it comes to the question of Palestine, has necessitated this emergency session. Tanzania joined 120 member states in voting for a resolution which calls for immediate ceasefire to allow humanitarian assistance to those that badly needs it. We participated in the vote while being fully aware that it would take more than a voice of this Agust Chamber to achieve this objective. We know it is up to Israel or Palestine to put a stop to the deadly conflict, which has the potential of turning into our worst nightmare. Peace, which is ultimate desire of the United Nations, has and remains elusive. Instead of showing peace in the region, we have witnessed the showing of violence, hatred, and vengeance. If the old proverb, "You reap what you sow," is anything to go by, we should not be surprised to witness a continuous of the conflict and violence between Israel and Palestine. We must opt for peace if we seek to achieve lasting peace in the region and the world. That said, Mr. President, Tanzania strongly denounces all forms of violence by whomsoever committed. We recognize that conflict and violence has never been viable tools for achieving peace. If anything, an eye for an eye will leave all concerned blind. We thus implore upon all concerned to exercise restraint to avoid further suffering. Tanzania recognizes that Israel has lied to live in peace and security, but the same applies to its neighbors, including Palestine. Violence is a long way; peace the best way. As such, we implore all parties concerned to seek a path towards lasting peace through genuine dialogue underpinned by the support of the international security. Despite the thick clouds and blinding mist, there is hope to achieve the long-desired goal of establishing of two equally viable states coexisting in peace, harmony, and prosperity. Let's work towards peace; it can be done. Let each of us do their part. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Republic of Tanzania. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sweden.
President, thank you. Sweden aligns itself with the statement of the European Union. I'd like to thank the President of the General Assembly for convening the resumed 10th Emergency Special Session as the situation is deeply alarming and risks implications for the whole region. Sweden takes notes of the last week's attempts at a Security Council to have a resolution addressing the situation in Gaza and Israel. It is deeply regrettable that the Security Council failed to address the increasingly alarming situation. We encourage the council members to find a common position and fulfill the council's mandate and responsibility. Sweden abstained on the resolution put forward last Friday. This was due to the lack of condemnation of the abhorrent terrorist attack perpetrated by Hamas, as well as the lack of reference to Israel's right to defend itself in line with international law and international humanitarian law. We reiterate the call of the European Union on Hamas to unconditionally release all hostages. The use of human shields is unacceptable. At the same time, we are concerned by the rapidly deteriorating humanitarian situation in Gaza. We strongly support the call in the resolution for continued, rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access and aid to reach those in need. Sweden and the European Union have underscored the importance of humanitarian assistance reaching Gaza, including through humanitarian corridors and humanitarian pauses. Sweden reiterates the importance of ensuring the protection of all civilians at all times in line with international humanitarian law and deplores all loss of civilian life. In particular, we recall the need to protect children in armed conflict. In response to the unfolding humanitarian crisis in Gaza, Sweden has announced around 13 million US dollars in new humanitarian aid, channeled through the WFP, UNICEF, UNFPA, and ICRC. This is in addition to Sweden's substantial core funding to humanitarian actors who have been responding on the ground since the start of the current crisis. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the UN and all its staff for their relentless work on the ground, often at the risk of their lives, as well as the tireless efforts of the Secretary-General to de-escalate the conflict. We deeply regret the deaths of UN personnel and express our condolences to their families. I thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Sweden. The distinguished representative of Iceland, you have the floor.
Mr. President, this Emergency Special Session is convened as another humanitarian catastrophe is unfolding in Gaza. We regret the impasse in the Security Council and call on council members to redouble their efforts to address the situation. Similarly, we are disappointed by the missed opportunity to build a broader consensus in this forum last Friday. This would have been possible had the draft included an explicit condemnation of the terrorist attack by Hamas on October 7 and the clear call for immediate and unconditional release of the over 200 hostages, including almost 30 children being held in captivity by Hamas. With this inclusion, Iceland fully supports the resolution's strong humanitarian call, including a call for an immediate, durable, and sustainable humanitarian truce leading to a cessation of hostilities. Mr. President, we deplore the immense suffering of innocent civilians and the thousands, including thousands of women and children that have been killed to date. We are alarmed by the impact of mass evacuations of civilians in Gaza. The grave situation, the unacceptable civilian death toll and suffering, calls for an immediate humanitarian pause and humanitarian corridors to facilitate the safe delivery of humanitarian aid throughout Gaza. Calls for safe and unimpeded humanitarian access, lifting of restrictions of necessities, including fuel, and the protection of civilians must be heeded. We are gravely concerned about reports of apparent serious violations of international humanitarian law, including the significant civilian death toll as a result of Israeli strikes that hit the Jabalya Refugee Camp. We call for an investigation of all possible violations of international humanitarian law and underline the responsibility of all those involved to strictly abide by the rules of war. Civilians and civilian objects, medical personnel, and humanitarian workers and assets must be protected and never targeted. Iceland greatly appreciates the UN Secretary-General's tireless efforts to ensure the urgent delivery of lifesaving humanitarian assistance to the civilian population of Gaza. We echo his calls for humanitarian aid to the civilian population of Gaza so desperately in need of food, water, shelter, and medical care. Fuel and electricity are urgently needed. More aid is needed in Gaza, and it is needed now. We commend all humanitarian personnel, working night and day, to facilitate the urgent delivery of humanitarian assistance. We deplore that in the past month, more than 70 UNRWA staff members in Gaza have been killed because of this conflict. Iceland has responded to the UN emergency appeals with contributions to UNRWA, our longstanding humanitarian partner, and the lead UN agency mandated with supporting Palestine refugees. Today, we are doubling our contributions to the emergency appeal, bringing the total to 140 million Icelandic krona, and we urge all the donors to step up their support to UNRWA's critical frontline delivery of aid to the people of Gaza. Mr. President, Iceland has condemned in the strongest possible terms the brutal and indiscriminate terrorist attacks by Hamas. There can be no justification for terrorism. All hostages should be released immediately and unconditionally. We have also stressed that while Israel has an inherent right to defend itself, it must do so within the bounds of international law. International law provides states with rights and obligations; both are sacred. We must prevent further escalation for the sake of Israelis, Palestinians, and the wider region. A continuous cycle of violence is fueling the flames of hate and racism. We are seeing too many incidents of antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab sentiments across the world. Mr. President, the decades-long cycle of violence in Israel and Palestine will not stop while Hamas continues to use its position in Gaza to wage terror on innocent civilians and spread radicalism. And it will not stop while Israel's unlawful settlements continue in the West Bank and Gaza remains under blockade. The international parameters for a long-term, sustainable solution to the conflict are clear: a two-state solution based on international law, with Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition. This is what we in the international community should strive for. And I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Iceland. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cabo Verde.
Mr. President, thank you for giving us the floor. We would also like to thank the President of the 78th General Assembly for convening this 10th Special Emergency Session in response to the unprecedented humanitarian crisis happening for the last four weeks and ongoing at this very moment while we are delivering our statements. Guided by the principles of the charters, sorry, of the United Nations and the universal values that we stand for, the government of Cabo Verde, immediately after they occurred, condemned the attack on Israel perpetrated by Hamas on October 7. For this very reason, Cabo Verde voted in favor of the Canadian proposal. It did, however, not pass, and for that reason, Cabo Verde abstained on the voting of the resolution. Our government reiterates that civilians and civilian structures should never, ever be targets and express deep concern by the development of the situation in the region and the resulting heavy civilian casualties in the Gaza Strip. The protections of civilians is paramount and should be observed at all times. We strongly condemn all violence and hostilities against civilians, which are unjustifiable, regardless of their motivation, whenever and by whomsoever committed. The government of Cabo Verde expresses grave concern at the continuation and escalation of the tragic and violent events taking place and the enormous number of civilian casualties, including very high numbers of infants and children that continue to rise at alarming rate. Moreover, we appeal all to observe full respect of their responsibilities under the international law, the international human rights law, and international humanitarian law in relation to the protection of civilians, humanitarian workers, and UN staff members. The humanitarian crisis is growing more dire by the day, and to face increasingly critical and colossal needs, we cannot postpone the providing of a much larger... critical and colossal needs, we cannot postpone the providing of a much larger volume of adequate, unimpeded, and immediate humanitarian aid and assistance on a regular basis to alleviate suffering, present further deterioration of the situation, and guarantee the basic rights of all civilians. We appeal for the urgent delivery and full access to essential supplies and services to all in need, in particular, access to communication, electricity, potable water, fuel, food, medical supplies to help all infants, children, elderly, injured, women, men, civilians, and humanitarian workers in need and so restore some of their dignity and humanity. The government of Cabo Verde appeals the international community to uphold all political, legal, humanitarian, and moral obligations and responsibilities to bring an end to this horrific and unprecedented crisis through additional efforts by all parts involved to maintain the mechanism of dialogue for peace under the framework of the UN Charter and the Vienna Convention so that peace can prevail for all families and people in the region. We also ask for the immediate release of all hostages. Before concluding, on behalf of the government and the people of Cabo Verde, we express our heartfelt condolences to the governments, international organizations, and all those who lost their family members, colleagues, friends, and beloved ones, and express our deepest solidarity towards all families in Israel, in Palestine, and all other nationalities affected in these moments of darkness, deep grievance, and unbearable pain. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Cabo Verde. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Gambia.
Mr. President, at the outset, let me state that we stand in full solidarity with the Secretary General for his moral clarity on the Israel-Palestinian conflict and for bringing us the unvanished truth regarding the ongoing carnage in this brutal conflict. We pay tribute to the fallen UN personnel in Gaza for paying the ultimate price while serving humanity, as we strongly condemn the killing of UN personnel and the targeting of its facilities. This assembly has a solemn duty to ensure the protection of UN personnel at all times. Mr. President, one of the former Secretary General of this organization, Doug Hamelsgold, once said, and I quote, “The United Nations was not created in order to bring us to heaven, but to save us from hell.” And of course, these words of wisdom were simply amplifying the preamble of the United Nations Charter where it says, “We, the people of United Nations, determine to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war which twice in our lifetime has brought untold sorrow to mankind. We therefore condemn the untold sorrow that is being unleashed on civilians in Israel and Palestine. We strongly condemn the barbarity and violence against civilians in Gaza and on civilian infrastructure. The senseless, disproportionate, indiscriminate bombing and terrorizing of civilians is unacceptable. The war must stop.” Mr. President, we concur our sympathy to the families of the thousands of dead civilians, including children and women. With close to 10,000 people dead, no side can claim victory here. Mr. President, collective punishment is unacceptable. We therefore call for an immediate humanitarian access to Gaza for the urgent delivery of much-needed aid. The situation is dire, the siege must end. The lasting solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be achieved through peaceful means and not violence. It is therefore regrettable that the Security Council continues to abandon its responsibility to save lives of defenseless people and provide space for peaceful dialogue. Moral equivalence, selective outrage, and a hierarchy of compassion that discriminates people between people, communities, and religions in this conflict is unacceptable. We are all one big human family. Mr. President, at the root of this conflict is the illegal longstanding occupation of the Palestinian land and operation of Palestinians. The occupation must come to an end. We will only have more cycles of violence as long as the occupation continues. The supply of weapons into the region only perpetuates the suffering of civilians. As members of the international community, we must invest in serious dialogue and peace. We cannot continue being idle bystanders in this dehumanizing war. War is not normal. The killings must stop. Extragreatual killing and persecution of the population in the occupied Palestinian territories, particularly in the West Bank, must stop immediately. Mr. Speaker, war crimes and crimes against humanity are unfolding before our eyes. Impunity and violence violations of international law, international humanitarian law, and international criminal law must be addressed. Mr. President, it is outrageous that children are being treated as collateral damage in this conflict. Children are buried under the rubble with no chance of being saved. Imagine the extent of their suffering and agony. With the heartless manslaughter of over 3,200 children in Gaza already, where is the moral outrage from the international community? This carnage need to stop now. Mr. President, our final message to the international community is that let us revive peace initiatives and a credible peace process with a view to achieving lasting peace for the people of Israel and Palestine, leading to final status negotiation. A viable peace initiative that has the support of the region. The Arab Peace Initiative of 2002 still exists. It is a comprehensive and credible regional peace initiative. We call for its urgent revival. A fresh political dialogue towards this end must be initiated. Both sides in this conflict, with the support of the United Nations, must commit to such a dialogue on the basis of Arab peace initiative. The global peace movement must step up its advocacy for lasting peace in the Middle East. We therefore call on the international community to take immediate steps towards reviving the two-state solution for lasting peace to prevail in Israel and Palestine. May peace reign in the Holy Land. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Gambia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of South Sudan.
Mr. President, Your Excellencies, dear colleagues, the government of South Sudan extends its heartfelt condolences for the tragic loss of innocent lives of children and women from both sides of the conflict. Israel and Palestine, we know too well the truth of conflicts, and we know that loss during the time of crisis is never easy, and we share your griefs. During the time of crisis, it is also imperative that we unite and strive for a peaceful resolution to the matter. The government of South Sudan firmly believes that peace is the only path forward, and we call upon the involved parties to earnestly work towards resolving the conflict through peaceful means. The government of South Sudan unequivocally denounce the use of terrorism as a means to achieve political objectives. South Sudan abstained from the resolution because terrorism is indefensible, and any resolution must hold those responsible for the events of October 7th accountable. Furthermore, we implore Hamas to release all hostages without preconditions. Children should never be used as pounds. They deserve the opportunity to live their childhood without fear. We also advocate for the unrestricted humanitarian aid access and the safeguarding of all civilian population from both sides. Mr. President, dear colleagues, the core of the matter lies in a clear moral distinct between right and wrong. War inflicts pain and destruction while peace fosters healing and prosperity. Let us work together. Let us work together in pursuit of peaceful resolution that benefits all parties involved. Today, we stand before you with heavy hearts, fully aware that this podium was established to address the crisis that may arise similar to the one we face today. While disagreements are inevitable among us as human beings, we believe that in such moments, unprovoked terrorists cannot be acquitted with rights and cannot justify any grievances. The Israel-Palestine conflict has been excessively documented in various UN resolutions and negotiation agreements. Therefore, the final agreement must be the result of negotiations between the concerned parties. While external support can facilitate peace, the primary commitment must come from the parties themselves. We draw our inspiration from South Sudan’s long struggle for self-determination, which eventually led to our independence in 2011. It demonstrates that even after years of conflict, negotiations accepted by both parties can pave the way forward for a peaceful settlement. Once again, we emphasize that the core issue here is a clear moral distinct between right and wrong. Terrorism is unacceptable, and any resolution must ensure accountability for the events of October 7th. Mr. President, South Sudan urgently called for the release of all hostages by Hamas without preconditions. Children should not be used as a bargaining chip. They deserve the opportunity to enjoy their childhood. Additionally, we cannot advocate, we have to advocate for unhindered access to humanitarian aid and the protection of civilian population by all involved parties. The path to a win-win situation lies in embracing peace as war only brings destruction and suffering. South Sudan remain optimistic about the future of the world. We have came a long way since our struggle for independence, overcoming numerous challenges and gaining valuable experiences. With the continued international coordination, we are confident that we can realize our vision of a peaceful, prosperous, and progressive world. Our historical struggle for self-determination stand as a testament to the power of dialogue, understanding, and cooperation in shaping a better world. We are committed to contributing to the global efforts to address challenges facing our human family. We pledge our dedication to multilateralism and international cooperation as the most effective means to achieve our shared aspirations. We are eager to actively engage in this assembly in other forms to exchange insights, experience, and the best practices with fellow members, states. Together, we can rebuild trust and rekindle global solidarity, ensuring brighter future for current and future generations. In these trying times, when the world faces terrorists, unprovoked attacks, and crises, it falls upon those unafraid to condemn it, to pave the way that leads to peace. President Zalva Keir-Mayadi extends his condolences to the loss innocence of children, women, and population. His Excellency condemn this hideous unprovoked terrorist attack perpetrated by Hamas, emphasizing that no political grievances can ever justify the killing of innocent civilian. Mr. President, this message conveys South Sudan solidarity with the innocence in the face of conflict. It resolutes condemnation of violence targeting civil society and people. South Sudan stands firmly with the international community in denouncing all forms of terrorism and violence against civilians. South Sudan stand for peace, and South Sudan is calling for peace. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of South Sudan. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cyprus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cyprus aligns itself with a statement made by the European Union, and we welcome the convening of this emergency special session of the General Assembly. While we have been debating in this forum over the past few days, a major crisis has been unfolding in the Middle East. We mourn the loss of life and suffering of so many innocent civilians, including UN personnel who perished in the line of duty. This situation did not evolve in a vacuum. The terrorist attack perpetrated by Hamas on 7th October, which we unequivocally condemn, cannot be justified by any means. Faced with this highness act, Israel has the right to self-defense in line with international law, including international humanitarian law. We echo the calls for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages while at the same time underscoring that Hamas does not represent Palestinians. Cyprus reiterates the importance of ensuring the protection of all civilians at all times in line with international humanitarian law and deplores all loss of civilian life. It is imperative that the dire humanitarian situation in Gaza be addressed by allowing for the constant, unhindered, and safe delivery of humanitarian assistance to the Gaza Strip. Cyprus supports UN and regional efforts to ensure the sustained flow of humanitarian aid to those in need. Increasing humanitarian assistance for Palestinians while ensuring that such assistance is not abused by terrorist organizations is a priority for Cyprus and the EU as a whole. As this grave situation is rapidly evolving, the urgent need for de-escalation cannot be emphasized enough. A spillover to neighboring countries would be disastrous and right now does not appear unlikely. This is a crisis with potential catastrophic consequences, not least because the conflict also poses serious national security threat, particularly for countries of the region that should not be underestimated, including due to potential increase of refugee flows. The UN Charter remains a cornerstone of international law and the pursuit of international peace and security. Respect for the UN Charter and international law should be a guiding principle for all parties, in particular with this concerns the protection of civilians, civilian infrastructure, and medical facilities, including UN premises and their personnel. Mr. President, our region cannot shoulder further instability, and the current crisis has amplified the need for reinstating a political process on the horizon. There is no other option than to create the necessary conditions and fully recommit to a viable two-state solution in line with the parameters reflected in the relevant UN Security Council resolutions. A comprehensive, lasting solution to the A comprehensive, lasting solution to the conflict is now critical in order to avoid repeated cycles of violence. As a country in the region, Cyprus has been offering a safe platform for evacuations via sea and air. Due to our geographical proximity, we have been in consultations and coordination with our regional partners to practically facilitate the provision of humanitarian assistance to address the dire humanitarian needs in the Gaza Strip. These efforts include the establishment of a maritime humanitarian corridor from Cyprus as a medium-long-term necessity which would contribute to alleviate the constantly increasing assistance necessities and serve to decompress other corridors with full consideration of the security aspect as well as the need to secure the sustained, regulated, and robust flow of humanitarian aid. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Cyprus. And I'll give the floor to the distinguished representative of Denmark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Denmark aligns itself with the statement of the European Union. Since October 7th, the world has witnessed a horrifying escalation of the situation in the Middle East. This outbreak of violence has already caused immense human suffering and, regrettably, the crisis is deteriorating by the day. We mourn the thousands of innocent civilians already killed or wounded in this terrible conflict and extend our most heartfelt sympathy and condolences to their families and loved ones. Denmark condemns in the strongest possible terms Hamas and its brutal and indiscriminate terrorist attacks across Israel. We reiterate that there can be no justification for terror and we strongly emphasize Israel's right to defend itself in line with humanitarian and international law in the face of such violent and indiscriminate attacks. We also call on Hamas to immediately release all hostages without any precondition. We are witnessing a heartbreaking level of civilian suffering. Denmark reiterates the importance of ensuring the protections of all civilians at all times in line with international humanitarian law. This includes taking all feasible precautions to prevent civilian casualties and reduce damage. We also underline the importance of protecting medical facilities, schools, and UN premises at all times. Mr. President, Denmark is gravely concerned at the deteriorating humanitarian crisis in Gaza. Together with the EU, we continue our call for continued, rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access throughout Gaza, including through humanitarian corridors and pauses. It is paramount to ensure an urgent increase in the provisions of humanitarian aid to the civilian population of Gaza, so desperately in need of food, water, shelter, electricity, fuel, and medical care. We welcome that some trucks with humanitarian aid have entered Gaza through the Rafa crossing but reiterate that much more is needed. Denmark is a long-term donor to UNRWA and among top 15 donors. To respond to the current situation, the Danish government has increased Denmark's humanitarian aid for Gaza and the West Bank with an extraordinary pledge of approximately $7 million. Denmark is grateful to the UN Secretary-General for his tireless efforts to ensure the urgent delivery of lifesaving humanitarian assistance to the civilian population of Gaza. We commend the humanitarian personnel working day and night in Gaza to facilitate the urgent delivery of humanitarian assistance but deeply regret that this heroic work has cost more than 70 UN personnel their lives. We express our deepest condolences to their families and reiterate that humanitarian workers and UN personnel must be protected at all times. Mr. President, as member states to the United Nations, we have and all have an obligation to work constructively to find solutions to this immense crisis. In particular, we have entrusted the Security Council with the primary responsibility to maintain international peace and security. Rarely should the weight of this responsibility be felt heavier than today. For this reason, we urge the Security Council and particularly its permanent members to redouble their efforts towards finding a common position that can address the current escalation of violence. In this regard, we recommend the constructive role played by the elected members of the Security Council. While we are deeply concerned about the situation in Gaza, it is also crucial to prevent regional escalation and we call on all regional actors to refrain from any action that can further aggravate the situation. We also note with great concern the significant increase in violence against Palestinians in the West Bank. We stress that the importance of engaging broadly with the Israeli authorities and the Palestinian authorities as well as regional and international partners to prevent further escalation. In this tragic situation, we are reminded once again of the need for a lasting and sustainable peace based on the two-state solution. For this reason, we remain committed to reinvigorating the efforts in the Middle East peace process. In the midst of the present crisis, we must never lose sight of this viable path to a durable peace. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Denmark. And I'll give the floor to the distinguished representative of Marshall Islands.
The Republic of the Marshall Islands stands in deep concern of the escalating security and humanitarian crisis in Gaza. We join many others in deploying the gruesome and terrorist acts of Hamas and we urge the safe treatment and immediate release of hostages. The Marshall Islands supports the ongoing engagement and diplomatic dialogue within the wider Middle East region and we stand in support of recognizing Israel's right to self-defense. The general same duty to secure security which every country in this room owes it to its own people. In addressing Israel's security against terrorist act is important and with no less urgency, the wider response to the humanitarian crisis is clearly needs to be upscaled. War is difficult and horrible, tragic, as all wars are. Nobody wins. The international community has learned lessons from the distant and recent past or we all clearly certainly should have learned those lessons. But those lessons are not always simple issues and the current crisis is highly complex and layered. The Marshall Islands supports international effort to urgently address the growing and difficult humanitarian crisis in Gaza and to ensure supplies are safely monitored and delivered to vulnerable civilian populations. The people of Gaza are not the same as Hamas and addressing militant terrorists who are embedded in civilian infrastructure is complex. Hamas has not been elected since 2006. Appropriate and responsive humanitarian measures and specific narrowly targeted and time-bound pauses are needed to ensure further and faster delivery of humanitarian aids. But this cannot be at the expense of the worsening security threat or allowing Hamas to rearm itself, which only extends the cycle of violence and conflict. Armed to civilian, any civilian regardless of nationality should and must be minimized. This is true of any conflict. We can do better as a General Assembly, even as there are difficult issues on which we all struggle to find common words. The Marshall Islands stands with the majority of voting members who voted to condemn Hamas by voting for the Canadian amendment or did not move to block it, even if that did not meet the procedural due third threshold. Yes, this war has a typical context and a clear history before it. But if the General Assembly cannot even state or directly acknowledge what happened, then we are all doing something wrong. If we cannot call for the release of hostages, then we are doing something wrong. And if we cannot address the humanitarian and security dimension or dimension, then we are still doing something wrong. Hamas barbaric attacks on Israel happened and those were indiscriminate and specifically targeted at civilians. Limbs and heads ripped from bodies. That can be a call for revenge, but instead, this should serve to underscore the gravity of the threat posed by Hamas. And we are equally clear-eyed and concerned about the devastating humanitarian crisis within Gaza and the wider regional impact of this war. And as I speak, this remains an active hostage situation involving people from 40 nations. It is important that accountability is upheld and that there remains wider multilateral engagement even or especially than there is disagreement. Objectivity cannot be cast aside and playing field is level, not predetermined and addresses all evidence, facts, and actors. For the Marshall Island, we are now understanding the implication of multi-theater conflict and tension around the world. Throughout each, we can start to understand the common thread of security, of humanity, and dignity. It is imperative that this august body finds better means of working across divides and building common action. That task will be hard, but it is not impossible to capture the common concern with the diversity of views. As the UN General Assembly, we must keep working together to find an appropriate way to specifically express what has happened and the need from all populations of, for their security, safety, essential rights, and well-being. Thank you, Mr. President. Omualtada.
I thank the distinguished representative of Marshall Islands. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Andorra.
We're grateful for this special emergency session. Andorra subscribes to the statement made by the European Union and I have the honor of making the following comments in my national capacity. In the face of one of the most complex crises of the region, we'd like to state first and foremost our strongest condemnation of the terrible terrorist attacks committed by Hamas and Israel on the 7th of October. We express also our compassion for all the victims of the conflict and would like to make an urgent appeal for the release of all hostages. We also regret that over 70 members of the United Nations agencies have lost their lives while fulfilling their duty by providing assistance to the civilian population. Would like to express our solidarity and condolences to the families of the victims. Mr. President, Andorra urges the upholding of international law for the protection of the civilian population and attaches the greatest possible importance to the humanitarian action which is urgent in this case. Establishing a humanitarian truce as reflected in the resolution will offer opportunities to provide resources and to care for people living in Gaza and the high number of IDPs. We're grateful for the efforts to achieve this and we're encouraged that there has been humanitarian deliveries that have increased although clearly insufficiently. Mr. President, this conflict has had a horrific number of victims, most especially mostly women and children and this is a great source of concern for us. Added to that is the fact that this conflict has severely altered access to basic services that we have always championed in this organization. Furthermore, the right to health and the right to education can no longer be enjoyed. The cost of this in the future will be very high. The impact has been devastating and traumatic for entire families and communities. There is no way that the only alternative is to offer hope, to find peace. Children everywhere and every, and every side of the conflict live in the present, but they must be able to learn to project into the future and to project into the future from a place of peace. Mr. President, we acknowledge the actions and activities of the United Nations, of the Secretary-General, and of its agencies in this critical moment. Andorra calls for an immediate ceasefire and the deployment of all necessary diplomatic efforts to protect the civilian population in all zones affected by the conflict and to facilitate access to humanitarian aid in conformity with international law. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Andorra. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Palau.
We convene here at a fragile and precarious time in the world. Since the October 7th attack on Israel by Hamas, an attack that triggered a traumatic and heavy response from Israel, we're now seeing devastating, heartbreaking events tragically unfold in the Gaza Strip. Palau unequivocally condemns the terrorist attacks on Israel and expresses our deepest condolences to Israel and the families of those who lost their lives or were injured and call for the immediate release of hostages. The brutal fighting between Israel and Hamas that ensued has already taken the lives of thousands of civilians in the Gaza Strip, over 8,000 people en mounting, and inflicted wrenching misery on both sides. We similarly extend our sincere condolences to the families of the victims in Gaza and for the loss of UN staff and personnel. Mr. President, it would be remiss of us not to mention that Hamas intentionally puts the Palestinian people in harm's way by storing weapons and command posts under civilian hospitals, schools, mosques, and buildings. The suffering of citizens of Gaza isn't incidental to Hamas, it's essential, it's part and parcel of their propaganda. Hamas has repeatedly declared opposition to a two-state solution and to any negotiations with their stated goal to annihilate Israel completely. So how does one negotiate with an entity that wants to annihilate Jews from the face of the earth? Using the old tropes of Jewish occupation as a root cause of Hamas's barbarism doesn't in any way justify Hamas's murderous actions nor its continued use of unguided missiles sent into Israel. Invading civilian homes, terrorizing civilians, murdering young people at a concert, kidnapping babies, torturing them in a well-orchestrated attack that was probably meant to do exactly what it's doing now. Hamas is content to sacrifice the Palestinian people as they try to turn the world against Israel. It is for this reason that Palau voted to support the Canadian amendment to condemn Hamas. Colleagues, we can condemn the terrorist actions of Hamas and call for humanitarian response and restraint from Israel and Gaza. These are not mutually exclusive events, but because of the deep wounds of this region, it's often posed as an either-or, a proposition that the enemy of my enemy is my friend. But this leads to a downward spiral of hatred and extremism and perpetuates conflict and despair. Because this amendment to condemn Hamas failed and the resolution lacked language calling for the release of hostages, Palau abstained on the resolution. However, Mr. President, while we maintain that Israel has the right, if not the obligation, to defend itself, it should do so in accordance with regard for the safety of innocent civilians and in accordance with international law. and in accordance with international law. Food, water, medicine, and other essential humanitarian assistance must be able to flow into Gaza and to the people who need them. We commend efforts by many member states and UN agencies who’ve stepped up to help in the past few weeks. While dozens of trucks have passed through the Rafa Crossing, hundreds more must follow to meet the dire needs of over two million people. Palau also joins calls by others for humanitarian pauses in order to get more people out of Gaza and out of harm’s way. We are all too familiar with the atrocities of war, Mr. President, but war has its rules, rules that we all agreed to as members of this esteemed body. And in the midst of fighting, we must not forget our humanity. We urge for restraint to allow for certain events to happen that will remind us of this humanity, so that innocent people, including children, may be relocated to safer areas, so that hungry, thirsty, shell-shocked people can get some relief, so that injured civilians may get treatment, so that both sides may mourn and bury their dead. Palau calls on all parties to remember the sanctity of innocent human life. So many of these, those who’ve been killed are women and children, innocent children who’ve grown up in an already challenging environment. Many of those killed didn’t have any recourse or anywhere to go. We should not forget that a Palestinian mother will mourn her child the same way an Israeli mother does, and vice versa. In looking ahead as the Middle East rebuilds from this conflict, as it has done many times before, we urge for the resumption of talks for a two-state solution. Our concern is that if the status quo continues, it may ultimately result in a situation where Israel may win the battle but lose the peace. It will result in yet another generation of retribution, extremism, and hatred perpetuating this ongoing conflict that has plagued the Middle East for far too long. Our international community must redouble efforts to bring back the peace process. A durable solution with two people, Israelis and Palestinians, two democratic states living side by side in peace, security, and dignity within mutually recognized borders is necessary for a lasting peace. The distinguished delegate from the UK said it well: “We call for love over hate, light over darkness. Our thoughts and prayers are with the people of Israel and with the people of Palestine.” I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Palau. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Norway.
President, for the sake of children, Palestinian children and Israeli children, the world must do better. Diplomacy must do better. Save the Children on Sunday reported that nearly three thousand two hundred children were killed in Gaza in just three weeks. One thousand more are missing, presumed dead. On the Israeli side, at least thirty children have been killed. Every child’s death is one too many. Children bear no responsibility for the situation and must be protected. We grieve with the Israeli and Palestinian parents and can only imagine the desperation and sorrow caused by the loss of their loved ones. People on both sides deserve to live in peace and security, and two issues need to be crystal clear. One, all parties must act in accordance with international humanitarian law and ensure the protection of civilians caught in the midst of the hostilities. Even wars have rules. Two, all lives are equal, and there is no hierarchy between them. This is essential, not only for the protection of civilians today, but for the future for both Israelis and Palestinians. How people are treated during the conflict can determine the prospects for a political solution that can lead to a durable peace. President, we meet at an extremely critical time for Israelis and Palestinians, for the Middle East, and for the world. Norway has strongly condemned Hamas’ heinous terrorist attacks on 7 October, killing about one thousand four hundred people and taking more than two hundred hostages. We demand that Hamas and other actors in the Gaza Strip release all hostages immediately and unconditionally. Israel has a right to defend itself against the armed attacks by Hamas. However, we emphasize that the self-defense measures taken must be necessary and proportionate. Furthermore, all military operations must be conducted in line with international humanitarian law. All parties to armed conflicts have an obligation to protect civilians and civilian objects, including hospitals, schools, and other civilian infrastructure. The scale of the civilian suffering, both physically and mentally inflicted by the combination of intense Israeli bombardments and a blockade, is heartbreaking and unacceptable. President, on the basis of this humanitarian catastrophe, we find it difficult to draw any other conclusion than that the parties to this conflict are not doing enough to comply with their obligations to protect the civilians affected by the ongoing hostilities. We call on all actors to strictly adhere to the international humanitarian law principles of distinction, proportionality, and precautions in attack. We also call on the parties to ensure safe, rapid, and unhindered access to humanitarian assistance and essential services for all civilians in the Gaza Strip. All parties to the conflict must make sure that the civilian population can uphold the bare necessities of life, even in the midst of war. Opening the Karem Shalom border crossing would also improve humanitarian access while safeguarding Israel’s legitimate security concerns. On the Egyptian side, we encourage accepting the offer of international humanitarian staff to complement and boost the impressive work of the Egyptian Red Crescent. We commend the courage and resilience of Palestinian health and humanitarian workers and volunteers for their heroic efforts to save lives while risking their own. We mourn with the families of those who tragically lost their lives in the pursuit for humanity, peace, and a better world for others. We must honor their memory by giving it our best. Diplomacy must do better. President, we are deeply concerned about the increase in violence in the West Bank, including from Israeli settlers. The consequences of a further escalation of violence and potential destabilization in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, as well as in the broader Middle East region, would be devastating. We call on all actors in the region to contribute to de-escalation to prevent a wider regional conflict. President, the UN’s role is indispensable in this crisis. The UN family on the ground is making tremendous efforts to deliver on the humanitarian needs of the Gaza population under impossible circumstances. UNRWA, despite years of underfinancing, is making an absolutely crucial contribution. We encourage all member states to respond to appeals for additional financial support to ensure that the UN can maintain and scale up its response. We regret that the Security Council’s inability to come together to recommend actions to de-escalate and alleviate the grave humanitarian situation. The veto should never prevent the UN from fulfilling its mandate. It is therefore vital that the General Assembly has taken up its responsibility, adopting a resolution calling for a durable and sustained humanitarian truce leading to cessation of hostilities. Norway voted in favor of this resolution in light of the gravity of the situation on the ground, in particular regarding the humanitarian catastrophe we see evolving in Gaza. The violence must stop. We hope the Council will take up its responsibility. President, on the 25th of October, as Chair of the AHLC, Norway hosted an informal meeting among partners in the International Donor Group for Palestine. There was broad agreement among participants about the urgency of providing humanitarian assistance and ensuring access to Gaza. The need to continue our support to the Palestinian Authority, its institutions, and service delivery to the Palestinian people was another clear call from the meeting. There is no military solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. The solution can only be political. There must be a credible political path. The only viable solution to achieve lasting peace, security, and self-determination for both peoples is a negotiated two-state solution. Even in the middle of a war, there is a need to discuss ways to build a credible path towards peace. The children in Palestine and Israel are paying the highest price. They are being traumatized for life by this war. These children will one day be the leaders that we all depend on for a peaceful Middle East. President, I reiterate one last message: diplomacy must do better. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Norway. I now give the floor to the observer of the Sovereign Order of Malta.
The Sovereign Order of Malta is grateful for the opportunity to speak before you today as a neutral and non-partisan witness to the pain and suffering that is bedeviling the land in which we were founded nine hundred years ago and which is the place of the origin of our faith. As both a faith-based international entity and a Catholic Hospitler Order, our mission is to serve all of humanity through the provision of healthcare and related services. Our love of the Holy Land, sacred to us as it is to Jews and to Muslims, has been severely tested by the calculated violence that has recently been unleashed on so many people, so many lives lost, so many people suffering, so many children and mothers in pain. A report issued today by the Palestinian Permanent Observer reports that nineteen hospitals and forty-nine health clinics have been hit by incoming fire, while the main hospital for cancer patients was seriously damaged on the 30th of October and is no longer functioning. The main generator at the Indonesian Hospital in Gaza has now run out of fuel, and as a surgeon at Al-Shahifa Hospital warned, basically without electricity, this hospital becomes a mass grave. Our ambassador to Palestine informs us that in the West Bank, the Holy Family Hospital in Bethlehem, operated by the Order of Malta, has made every provision necessary to accommodate victims and those in need of medical assistance. However, due to blockades and border crossings being closed, hospitals across the West Bank, including ours, are unable to replenish their stocks of lifesaving medical supplies and equipment. Patients are fearful of traveling to seek help, and doctors are prevented from operating the mobile clinics which used to bring such help and support to so many. More suffering, more anger, more death. Mr. President, consider the plight of pregnant women in Gaza. Estimates are that there are up to fifty thousand, with five thousand-plus deliveries anticipated each month. The destruction of healthcare facilities and the lack of suitable medical and supplies puts the lives of these mothers and their infants, as yet unborn, in jeopardy. The overcrowding of shelters and the damage to water and sanitation infrastructure in Gaza is contributing to a public health disaster that is already manifest. Whichever faction was responsible for, or whoever’s missiles landed in the grounds of Al-Ahli Hospital, one thing is clear: it is the innocent, particularly women and children, who ultimately bear the heaviest burden. Al-Ahli Hospital is symbolic of what this once holy land has now become: a self-fulfilling prophecy of death, destruction, and hatred. Mr. President, this chamber has been debating Palestine for many, many decades. Some of the best and most astute brains in the world have, however, failed to achieve much more than piecemeal and half-won compromise. Yes, amid it all, a lot of real promise, but promise that has not been realized. Perhaps at this moment of international crisis, we can all put self-interest and global alliances aside and implore this Assembly to forge a peaceful settlement that will result in bringing more than a safe corridor, or twenty trucks a day bringing critical aid to two million people, or the measured release of innocent, unjustly imprisoned hostages, all of which is necessary, all of which is needed, but which simply does not match the scale of what is happening in the lives and in the hearts and souls of millions of Muslim, Christian, and Jewish families. We urge this United Nations to live up to its charter, for the sake of the children of Palestine and Israel, the ones that will survive this conflict. Do not let history repeat itself by once more doing too little too late. Future generations may not be able to hold us to account, but Almighty God will. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the observer of the Sovereign Order of Malta. I now give the floor to the observer of the African Union.
Mr. President, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the African Union Commission, I want to express our sincere thanks and gratitude to you, Mr. President, for convening this timely and important Tenth Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly. We thank the Hashemite Kingdom of Jordan and the Islamic Republic of Mauritania in their capacities as Chair of the African Group and Organization of the Islamic Cooperation Group respectively for requesting the session. Mr. President, we are meeting today at a very difficult time. For the African Union Commission, the situation in Gaza and the occupied territories remains a deep matter of concern. As we sit in this hall, the bombardment and hostilities are still going on right now. The Israeli airstrikes in the last few weeks and the recent major ground offensive in Gaza have claimed thousands of lives, including those of thousands of children. This has created a dire humanitarian situation which has dramatically deteriorated an already fragile situation. We condemn the escalating violence and loss of civilian and innocent lives, including those of UN staff and humanitarian workers. All human life, no matter race or creed, is sacred and must be protected, and fundamental rights and dignity for all must be upheld. We join others in extending our condolences to all those affected by this crisis, and also join in calling for an immediate ceasefire and cessation of hostilities, while also urging all the parties to engage in a meaningful dialogue to de-escalate tension. We also join the call for the release of prisoners and hostages. The cycle of violence and suffering has to end. The cycle of violence and suffering has to end, and a durable solution must be found through a just and comprehensive peace process that respects the aspirations and rights of both Palestinians and Israelis. We reaffirm our support. We reaffirm our support too and the confidence in the SD's leadership, the Secretary-General's leadership, and join in supporting his call for the provision of much-needed medical equipment, food, fuel, and other humanitarian supplies desperately needed, as well as access for humanitarian personnel. Mr. President, the African Union's support to the Palestinian cause is very profound for us. It is premised on the values of freedom, justice, and humanitarian principles that Africa defends in the international fora alongside all those striving to ensure that Palestine regains its right to exist as a key viable state. Africa has consistently expressed deep concerns at the consequences of impunity, unilateral policies, provocations, and non-adherence to international law. We therefore call upon the government of Israel to ensure that it upholds its obligations under international human rights law and the international humanitarian law. The international community must also shoulder its responsibilities by providing protection to civilians and access to humanitarian assistance. We all have a vested interest in promoting a just and peaceful resolution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Mr. President, we have regrettably witnessed over the last few weeks the inability of the Security Council to act and adequately deliver on this issue, while the situation was deteriorating at an unprecedented scale. We therefore welcome the adoption of the General Assembly Humanitarian Resolution last week, which called for an immediate, durable, and sustained humanitarian truce and a cessation of hostilities. While welcoming the resolution, however, it is clear that we must intensify our efforts to find a just and lasting solution to the conflict, one in which dialogue and diplomacy replace violence and destruction, one in which international law and the multilateral system serves and protects all equally, taking into account the legitimate concerns and aspirations of all parties involved. A peaceful resolution must be underpinned by a commitment to the principles of peace, justice, and diplomacy. It also requires mutual recognition of the rights and security of both peoples, and it is crucial for all parties to demonstrate genuine commitment to achieving lasting peace in the region. To conclude, Mr. President, we emphasize the need for the UN General Assembly, the Security Council, the Quartet of the Middle East, and the Secretary-General of the United Nations to resolutely commit to end this situation and to relaunch the peace process based on the two-state solution, Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and a sovereign Palestine state with East Jerusalem as its capital in accordance with the relevant United Nations resolutions and within the framework of the relevant African Union pronouncements. Today, more than ever, we should recognize that we live in an interconnected world where the respect for human rights, human dignity, and agreed global norms should be the standard. I thank you for your attention.
I thank the observer of the African Union. And I'll give the floor to the observer of the League of Arab States.
Shukran, Sayyid Raith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir? This Tenth Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly is being held while the international and multilateral community is experiencing a real crisis that threatens to undermine the foundations of the collective security system that we agreed on in the United Nations. Rather, this crisis seeks and threatens to replace it with a system that is based on partisanship, alliances, and competitions over geopolitical concerns and priorities based on obsolete colonial alliances and in a way that is completely disconnected from the basic legal, moral, and humanitarian principles of our organization. The 75th Anniversary Declaration continued sincere intentions that seek to enhance and develop our international multilateral work and to provide and create more bonds that bring us closer to the principles of peace and security and development of human rights. Yet it is shameful that the presentation of the new Agenda for Peace in the General Assembly is met with the attempts of some to implement a parallel agenda in the Security Council, an agenda that replaces sustaining peace as a basis for our work with sustaining war. And this is done by some prominent member states in the Security Council continue, rather they stubbornly persist, in blocking any attempt to simply declare a ceasefire in Gaza. And they simply pretend to deal with some of the humanitarian repercussions of the war on the unarmed Palestinian people, Palestinian civilian people in Gaza and the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory. Unfortunately, this is amplified by the fact that Israel, the occupying authority, and those who support it, continue to block the application of the supreme humanitarian values that were the basis of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights that we adopted 75 years ago. They continue to prevent the unimpeded and unconditional passage of humanitarian aid, and they seek to exile the civilian unarmed Palestinian people in a blatant violation of international humanitarian law. And this is a quest to implement hateful, personal, and colonial interests that belong to an extremist Israeli government, the Palestinian people who are crushed under an unjust Israeli occupation, the Palestinian people who are subject, and for a long time and since before the Gaza event started, are being subjected to different kinds of violations of the legitimate and inalienable rights. These Palestinian people will not be the only ones to suffer from this. Rather, the entire international community will suffer. They will suffer from the double standards that are being shamelessly and persistently applied to Ukraine and to Palestine. And these deepen the concept of racism and hatred, and they further inflame anger and frustration, which in turn will lead to more violence and counterviolence, Mr. President, the League of Arab States. And since the start of the dangerous situation on the 7th of October in Gaza has been following with great concern and even greater sorrow the Security Council's failure, four times failure, to adopt a draft resolution that would achieve the three main demands of the League of Arab States. And here I would like to associate myself with the statement delivered by Jordan on behalf of the head of the Arab group. These demands are a ceasefire, the unconditional and unimpeded flow of humanitarian assistance, and the non-eviction of Palestinian residents to other areas inside or outside the occupied Palestinian territory. And faced with this failure, the group of Arab states and the Islamic states, Islamic group and the Non-Aligned Movement have sought to salvage the remains of the multilateral order's credibility. And we called for this emergency session. And with the support of all peace-loving states, we have succeeded in the adoption of this humanitarian resolution entitled Protection of Civilians and Upholding Legal and Humanitarian Obligations. With a majority of 121 votes in favor and 14 states against, these states have chosen the wrong side of international action and will bear their historic responsibility for the damage that they have done to international collective action. We stress that the Palestinian-Israeli conflict did not start on the 7th of October 2023. I repeat, the Palestinian-Israeli struggle did not start on the 7th of October 2023. The Palestinian question is not and will not be a branch of the war and terrorism as some are trying wrongfully to portray it. The legitimate right to self-defense does not apply to cases where the lands of others are occupied by force. These cases are subject strictly to the principles of relevant international humanitarian law. And despite the humanitarian nature of this resolution and its elevated legal and moral value as it reflects the will of more than two-thirds of the United Nations members, the discussions that took place in the Security Council afterwards clearly show that some major powers insist on their position to give Israel free rein in its aggression on the unarmed civilian population and the occupied Palestinian territory. Rather, these powers encourage Israel to expand the scope of this conflict by aggressing Arab states in Syria and Lebanon and by seeking to drag regional non-Arab states into this conflict. And this aims to worsen the regional crisis and to reap maximum benefit at the expense of the Palestinian people and their just cause. Mr. President, in closing, we are required by our people and our leaders here in the General Assembly, the world's free democratic parliament, we are required to enforce on everyone respect for the principles of collective security that we have all agreed on as a basis for multilateral action. We are required to use all means possible to put an end to this farce whose episodes reflect more and more destructive humanitarian, legal, and establishmentary dimensions. We, the League of Arab States, call for the President of the General Assembly to coordinate with the Secretary-General, who we renew our trust in and in whose positions we see as trustworthy and clear. We encourage him to engage in consultations, urgent consultations, to work on the implementation of the humanitarian provisions of this resolution, including primarily a ceasefire and the unimpeded and unconditional humanitarian assistance access. And we will support every sincere effort that seeks to return security and stability and to initiate a sincere attempt to create a political horizon that would eliminate the Israeli occupation, that is the cause of all this suffering, and would allow for the establishment of an independent Palestinian state with Al-Quds al-Sharif as its capital. I thank you, sir.
I thank the observer of the League of Arab States. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item. In accordance with the terms of the last paragraph of the resolution adopted at the 41st Plenary Meeting on 27 October 2023, the Tenth Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly is temporarily adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.